Is everybody ready now? I'll call the May eighth meeting of the Tiverton School Department to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for coming. The first item on the agenda, the third item on the agenda is new business. Meet with forensic audit from Markham L O P. And I'll turn that over to Attorney Scangio.
Thank you. Good evening, School Committee. So tonight, before the committee, Markham Accountants and advises a group that the town of Tiverton hired to perform a forensic audit of the school district, has asked to meet with the school committee and ask them essentially some discovery questions. They will identify themselves in a minute and explain the reason why they're here and the scope of their questions. The committee asked to meet as a group, as I've explained to them previously today, because the committee feels that it is a committee, not individuals. So they thought the best way to respond to any questions that the forensic auditors might have would be in a public session, so the public can see what the questions are and the responses are, and then make their own determinations if they need to do any. With that, gentlemen, I'd ask you to introduce yourselves, the reasons why you're here tonight, and feel free to ask the committee.
As part of our conversation, we'll touch on each of those.
Okay, okay. And then, secondly, is this a forensic audit, an internal audit, or is this a component of a forensic audit? Just trying to get an understanding.
What we've been engaged to do is a process review, going through what we would do with no other internal audit. This is step one, and based on the findings, it could get to a further level of going down to a greater level of detail, based on the engagement letter that was put together with the town.
Okay, thank you.
I have no questions for Markham, but I did want to mention Dr. Larkin wanted to make sure that you all knew. Unfortunately, he had work commitments that he could not change, and he does apologize for his absence.
Completely understandable. So, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Mike. I just want to say that I don't have any questions, but thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nice to meet all of you.
So with that being said, we'll start off. Mike, do you want to kick us off, please?
Your microphone too, sorry.
I just want to make sure that wasn't our last question.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, no, no problem. So as Jim had laid out, what we're trying to get an understanding of is your role in the budget process. So we're looking at the correlation between what the school district does, the school committee's role, and both as a governing body and as a component of the budget process itself, and then ultimately, the town's role in getting funding approved and the allocation back to the school district. So we have had some conversations to date, and what we want to do is continue that to get your perspective on how the process works. You know, there is a timeline that's built into the budget book that is produced by the school district. The touchpoints that you have with the superintendent and any of the folks within the finance team, the discussions that you would have to get questions answered or clarifications. So we're talking about, you know, your role as kind of a governing body, is what type of questions would you ask back to them to get further information, to help you come up with a decision? And then, the interactions that you would have with the town to present what the budget is, to make a determination as to what the ask ultimately is going to be, and how you then work with the town once funding allocations are shared with you to actually get the finalized budget in place. So I know it's a group setting, so it's somewhat hard. I'm asking a body of people to kind of walk through that. But, you know, if there's anyone that wants to start off, you know, we usually think this process starts sometime in the fall, around October and November. So is there some insights you can share with us as to, you know, when does the school superintendent and finance folks reach out to you? What type of communication is that? Is it a meeting like this? Is it, you know, data that is sent to you first in advance for your review? Just a general lay of the land as to the start of the budget process?
I guess I'll start, if that's okay. So they, as I'm sure they told you, they begin their process long before they come to us. About December, we do have a finance subcommittee that we sort of reinstituted this year. They, we would meet in December, and then the superintendent and his admin team would, in that same month, basically present to the school committee the starting point, if you will. A series of meetings to discuss increases, decreases, needs, priorities, and, you know, simple discussion about where that needs to be. You saw the timeline. We then have to submit, in accordance with state law, a budget to our council. They then are, they coordinate setting meetings to meet. We also have a budget committee that coordinates, coordinates, sets meetings to meet. Once they approve a appropriation, again, as you know, that we have 30 days from that date, again, state law, to provide a balanced budget that does not incur debt, so basically a balanced budget. If anyone else has anything they want to add.
We're just sad that we do get a budget book from the superintendent given to us, what, sometime around the holidays? That's the book we can take home and start to look through it at our own pace. Previously, when I was on the budget committee for a couple of years, same sort of thing, we would get a budget book, except it would have all the town in it, including schools. Not on the school committee, obviously, this is just the school department. But that happens around the holidays.
You had mentioned the finance subcommittee was reinstated this year. Had it gone away, or what was, what were the circumstances for it to be reinstated?
The finance subcommittee is not a subcommittee required by statute or required by charter or required by our own policies and procedures. Ms. Farnworth and I felt that it would be beneficial to break out in a smaller group and try to get a handle on the information before it was brought to the larger group. It was in place, went away. The 2020 election? Yes, so the 2020 election, we had a new election. There was a decision at that time to try to...
I think it was 2020.
Try two?
2020, we had appointed both myself and Mr. Decotis, and then it was largely inactive for those couple of years.
Thank you.
And then in, was it 22 or 23?
22.
We appointed.
It was late fall 2023. And again, it was just to meet, it was just to try to meet in a smaller group setting that was not, because that was sort of all we did versus the bigger meetings where we have so many things that we're focusing on.
If I could add too, I think the purpose of those meetings, since we reinstituted especially, is to get into the detail. is to get into the detail a lot more than we typically would in one of our general meetings. Because of course, during any of our meetings, we may have any number of topics to cover on. The other thing I wanted to point out as part of the process, I know Mrs. Polish described the chronological order of things, but I think the one thing I want to make sure that, you know, we include here is that in between that time that we're introduced to the superintendent's budget request, we do entertain presentations from key members of the administration and the school principals on what their budget requests and needs are. They each come in individually. We usually break it up over a few different meetings, and there's a lot of Q and A that happens with those folks.
Those are public meetings of the full circle.
With respect to the budget book, perhaps if you could describe the level of detail it goes in, is it sufficient for purposes of your analysis? What is it budget to actual? Does it break it down to a level of granularity that you feel provides for enough analysis?
I'm going to say that it is very detailed. The level of detail contained within includes a detailed breakdown of each employee, their salaries. Includes a detailed discussion of each of the department's budget requests in writing. It includes a lot of historical data, some pupil data, and I don't have my book with me today, but it, there is a great level of detail in there.
I think to Mr. Dakota's early point, that's why we get it over the holidays.
Give you enough time.
Yeah, I guess to go to that point, is the timeline that's been established still seen as something that works viably for you? You know, as everything changes, expectations, demand, focus, whatever you want to classify, the heightened awareness of fiscal situations that towns and communities are in? Is that timeline still workable?
Yeah, I'd like to say that, you know, our charter has changed recently, the last few years. So we actually have a little more time than we used to. Again, referring back to the budget committee, we had a little more stringent timeline. We had to get things in a little earlier. No, COVID probably changed some of the way the whole state and the country did it, right? So now we're looking more like a June. So we do have a little more time. I think it helps us see some actuals come in a little bit closer to the end of the year to see where we are. Helps forecasting a little bit more. But I would say, I mean, I can't speak for my peers, but I would say the extra time the last couple of years has been helpful, for sure.
I'd like to add as well, and I agree with what Mike has said. The only concern I have is really that the timeline is actually, I'm not going to say too long at this point. I think that, you know, we, we meet very frequently to discuss the budget in advance of our taking a recommendation vote in early March. And then at that time, you know, we go through the steps of discussing it with the budget committee and then the town council when they're ready. It's a long period. I mean, here we are this year in May, and we haven't even had the opportunity to present to the town council yet. And, you know, we're getting close to the end of June. It's not much time left. So I think in some respects, the timeline could be structured a little better.
For example, having certain milestones within it where everyone understands who's reporting to when, to the town, and so on, and how many different sorts of going back and forth to try to finalize?
And yeah, I mean, the high-level milestones are there as set in the charter.
The operational ones.
Yeah, but the, you know, the collaboration discussion component of it isn't set in stone, and it becomes a little bit difficult.
Now, I would, exactly what you said, Jim. It's, we have the general touchpoints, but certainly, as you all know, working with the businesses, usually you're starting this in August. So while it seems long, I think it would be more helpful to have, especially when you're working with two bodies that most, that both have to have public meetings, that both have to, you know, adhere to that 48-hour notice and have any number of other topics and items that they're in charge of. I think it would be more helpful to have really a more specific timeline, earlier collaboration, earlier meetings, just so that we're all aware, so that to Diane's point, we don't get to, you know, the end of May and...
To record.
It would be helpful. Can you still hear me? I would imagine you can with it off. It's, it would be helpful, to your point, to have more touchpoints through there with, especially where you're dealing with so many different bodies that, you know, when's pre-consult? When's, you know, you know, I understand that when, you know, even to go to, I would say forecasting. You know, let's, you know, that should be happening in the summer. Let's talk about some forecasting, then let's do some pre-consult. Then let's, you know, we get into the budget season, let's have some set dates that, and I would say more than one, that you're going to meet with the budget committee. Maybe we do some joint ones initially, budget committee, town council, school committee, so we're not saying the same thing two different times. So I think your idea of having some interim touchpoints is really an excellent one.
There was a comment that it's May, and you haven't presented to the town yet. Compared to previous years, when was it presented to the town? Or how does this year compare to previous years with that touchpoint?
I believe we're running late this year. I think it's usually in the April timeframe.
And remember, our charter was changed, so we didn't, you, you, we've only been doing this now the second year. Before that, we had a budget committee, we had a financial town referendum and a financial town meeting. So this is a fairly new process that the council now essentially sets the budget, and it's not a financial town referendum, it's not really a financial town meeting anymore. So this is only the second year.
It is, it is.
But to Diane's point, it was probably April, which even, you know.
There were a couple of points made on budget to actual analysis that's being done. And the discussions we've had with the folks in finance talked about a mid-year check on budget to actual. From where you sit as a governing body, would you like to see some of that information sooner? More frequently than mid-year? Or the question could be, are you getting briefed on that type of information sooner than halfway through the year?
Our expectation is to be receiving that information monthly, and we generally do.
Okay, so you're getting from the school finance folks?
From Ms. Rodrick, yeah.
Okay. So you're able to make adjustments or at least have a mindset of what could be coming your way from a issue standpoint of revenue shortfalls or expense increases?
We do, and we speak during our regular school committee meetings. Well, first of all, we may, we will discuss it with them in the finance subcommittee first. We will flush out any kind of variances that we're noting that perhaps we would like her to speak to, in addition to some that she's already planned to speak with. And then as we sit here as a body, she will go through a presentation, speaking to where we are year-to-date and any of the significant variances that may exist as we go through. It's, it's an ever-living and breathing document, right? As the monthly totals come in, you have timing issues, et cetera. But certainly, if we are running over on something, she's certain to call it out.
And we do try to at least, even if she's not speaking to it during, to a meeting, we try to have it in at least the consent agenda so that anybody can pull it off, because that does go in our backup.
One of the other points that we touched on in our conversations was the concept of fixed versus variable expenses. And fixed, what I mean by is there's no control by the district, meaning they're mandated. An example would be transportation, another could be pension administration, state mandates, TIAA. Is there that level of discussion that occur to understand fixed versus variable, the percentage mixed, and how the district does not have control over the fixed sort of costs?
Using the example of transportation, because it's been a frequent topic, are, in the state of Rhode Island, there are literally two primary bus companies. And, you know, when districts go out to bid, they decide who is going to bid on who. So there's really no competition whatsoever. We pay whatever the bus companies tell us we have to pay. With that said, so yes, it is a state requirement that we provide student transportation and busing. It is certainly not fixed, because it keeps going up every year per the contract, but it is absolutely mandated, and it is something we know generally in advance how much that increase is going to be.
In lieu of fixed and maybe mandated, it's probably a better word, meaning there's no control at the school district level.
No, you're correct on that.
We wish it was fixed.
I mean, certainly, one of our biggest fixed costs are, it's not fixed in the sense that we have no control, but it's fixed in the sense that we have contracts that we have to honor, and that that is based upon the personnel that we have it, you know, in place. That is a fixed cost going in. That's 94% of our budget, I believe. I think that's a good number. So it's fixed in the sense that, you know, we negotiate contracts, we honor those contracts. It's not fixed in the sense that certainly we can lay people off. But it is what I would consider, at least going into discussions, it's fixed by contract. Not just, you know, by Council 94, NEA, our both contracts.
Again, just targeting back to the role of oversight, basically. Do you ask the school department at times for any analyses to help support some of the numbers that are being presented beyond what they would already have provided? So I can do, you know, a head count analysis and X students per teacher, but if information like that isn't provided and you're curious as to how numbers are arrived at or how Tipton compares or stacks up to other communities, would you, and have you asked for that type of information?
Much to their dismay, we certainly do.
Okay.
I shouldn't, I shouldn't, not to their dismay, but we certainly will push back and have quite frequently, depending upon what particular, you know, whether it's, you know, a sports or whether it's a stipend or whether it's, you know, yeah, or, you know, full-time equivalents. We had asked just recently, I'll give you an example of, I believe it was Mrs. Farnworth, who had asked for, I want to see the class sizes for every single high school, middle school. So yeah, we will, we will push back where we feel like we just don't have the full picture and that we need information, and it will readily be presented. They'll try to answer it, but if we need more detail, we'll get it at the next meeting.
And I think a follow-up to that is, and I know that Deb said the word dismay, and I know, I know what she meant. I think a better picture of this is, and I've watched other town school committee meetings, and there's a lot of just nodding and rubber stamping type things when you're getting a presentation. And I think this body, and whether the public thinks it or not, I think we're pretty good at picking things apart and asking those tough questions and making them say, okay, I'll go back and I'll have it for the next meeting. And so I think we're pretty diligent in asking questions about little minute things. And I know sometimes maybe I'm sitting here, I'm thinking to my own peers, geez, let it go. We're really going at it to understand it, but it's important, right? Because it's, it's, every dollar can count. So I think to Ms. Polish's point, maybe not dismay, but to their, like, okay, all right, we have to do this type thing.
And the information that you do get, it satisfies your requests?
Yeah, I think a little more than a year ago, Ms. Farnworth asked to have this monthly put back in. We were getting it a little more infrequently, and it wasn't real, an ask, it was, we want this. I'm a visual learner, so I go well off of looking at black and red, right? So when I'm reading a report and I don't see anything that stands out to my eyes, but I hit a black or hit a red, that's where my questions will come. And I think that's what we do at a lot of those meetings, is we're just looking at why we're under forecasted in certain areas and we're over in certain areas. So that monthly spreadsheet that we get, a couple of pages, helps us know where we're tracking. And I think we do ask a lot of questions, why?
And no, there's never an issue with, if we're not satisfied, we'll keep asking and we'll ask for more data. And never, never an issue, I think, with either Peter or Amy. Or oftentimes, if they don't feel they can provide the right answers, they'll bring in supplemental administrators to help us understand. But it's never, you know, if we don't understand, we will push. Part of that may be because all of us have been on the school committee. Mike's the baby, and he's going on four years. So we've all been on the committee for an awful long time, so we do try to push.
I'd also like to add that, and I think this is two years back. You know, as a district, we've been struggling with having to rely on one-time funding to help us get by for some time. And a couple of years back, my desire was so that the entire committee would be fully aware of the concerns and how, the history of how we got to that point, asking, you know, my colleagues for ideas on how we can move forward as well. So to that end, what it resulted in was a pretty major project on behalf of the superintendent and director of finance to provide us with the specific historical data that we had requested. And I don't have a copy of it here now, it's been some time. But they did put that all together for us, and it wasn't a simple ask at all. And we, as a body, had multiple discussions about our situation, our financial situation, based upon the information we received from them.
Did any sort of next steps come out of that analysis to try to improve so you wouldn't rely upon one-time funding?
If I can remember it correctly, there were a few small things that came out of it. But at the end of the day, when you're talking about, you know, a rather large operation in the scope of a small town, it really came down to, you know, we need to be able to provide the education, and we will continue to advocate for funding.
Certainly, one of the, one of the things that I think we've all tried to do was bring more awareness to an issue, the issue. And we did try to discuss it every time we were before any body that we could beat, that this is coming, here's where we are, here's what we've done, this is coming. That's difficult, because, you know, again, it goes back to that desire to want to forecast, and people have a tendency to just want to focus on the here and now. So that certainly did come out of it, that we were all much more proactive and much more aware that we needed to make sure that we were at least bringing it up. And we brought it up every single budget discussion we had. We brought it up when we had discussions with the budget committee, who was the body at the time. You know, we brought it up to the public, so, but again, you know, it's difficult to get people to focus when, you know, everyone's really focused on, obviously, the here and now. But that gets back... But that gets back to that desire that I have to be doing that, you know, looking at some forecasting and not just focusing on.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to start with Return of the Jedi. You need to watch Star Wars. That makes, that's a good analogy, right? So we've been talking about Star Wars, Empire Strikes Back, and people start tuning in down the road, right? But this is something that I know going back to 2018, I was on the budget committee, this was, this was a problem. It was a problem in 2019. COVID, right, we'll forget that, that everyone had a problem with that. So this has been something that's building, 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 and it's coming to where we are now. That's why, obviously why you're here. And we would love to have better processes to streamline this a little more eloquently.
Your Star Wars analogy for those of us old enough when it came out in the 70s.
Oh, it's having a resurgence now, everybody knows.
But we use the word forecasting a bit. What's your role in the forecasting process and how does it, what's the timeline for that?
The town as a whole doesn't, I mean, it doesn't do forecasting. I think there's some minor forecasting that's done that goes to the states, the MTP reports and that type of thing.
Right, capital.
Or the, yeah.
Capital plan, the five-year capital plan, right? And there's a technology, a five-year technology plan as well.
So there's some minor forecasting, but not large-scale, school and town get-together. You know, let's try to forecast out five years and where we're, you know, what are we looking at and how to react to it?
Obviously, I mean, we see all types of different clients, municipalities, schools, commercial, whatever it is. And strategic planning is a very key component to it, a five-year look refresh on an annual basis. Do an enterprise risk assessment almost on an annual basis, what are your risks? How do you tie your control environment towards it to get to your inherent risk or to get to your residual risk?
Understanding that when you're in a government, and you've probably seen this more than most, that when you're in a government type of situation, you're dealing with elected officials who probably turn over every two years on the council, every four years on the school committee. So it's sort of putting those processes and procedures in place that regardless of who's in office, this is your forecasting, you know, pre-budget, budget process.
And to that point, we talked about the operations versus the policy. And getting to that level where if the operations are within someone's head and they know what to do, and we always use the analogy, they win the lottery and they're no longer around, it's not documented.
When you're looking at a year in advance, like we have to do, right? It's always looking at a whole year in front of us. As an example, when the budget committee actually was basically the final say in our budget process, we didn't really start meeting until January. We handed everything in in April. And then it was shake hands, wave, and we didn't meet again until January. Now, the budget committee controlled the town, so the schools, the fire, the plea, all the municipalities. So May, June, July, through the summer, through the fall, we don't even meet. So that should give an indication of Tiverton in general. So really, we get back together in January, we start getting some numbers and everyone's like, whoa, wait, what are you talking about? We, how do we, and then it's crunched into like a four or five month period. And then after May, just we all drift apart again until January. And that's sort of probably what needs to maybe change in the future. But just so you know, in a small town, it's been referenced, that's how it's always been. After May, when the budget's been voted on, the financial town hearing, when we switch the referendum, it's sayonara until January.
One of the points that we touched base on, if there were periodic touchpoints, once a quarter, between the school and the town, no set agenda, meaning there's not a reason, there's not an ask, there's not that, but just where are we in the process? Your thoughts?
Well, I mean, I don't know when we're due for another charter review, probably sooner than later. Be a great thing to put in the charter. We have one, we're supposed to meet with the budget committee, the school committee and the town council by like January 17th. I might be off by a couple of days, right? Very arbitrary meeting to sit down, kind of do an introduction, but maybe that needs to happen on a quarterly basis.
I wouldn't object.
And I don't necessarily think it needs to be in a governing document. I mean, state law already tells us we're supposed to be doing forecasting. State law already tells us we're supposed to be having pre-budget meetings. And, you know, that doesn't happen. So I don't necessarily think it needs to be in a governing document, but to your point, I think it needs to be something that it just, it becomes habit. It's good governance, it's good financial management. And, you know, you put it in place and regardless of who's there, that's what we do.
I agree on that. I think the, what we're all talking about is a little bit of, in industry term called disruption, basically, right? There's the way it's always been, no matter what it is, you know, how things are done at home, the office, at a town, you name it. The critical questions that come up are usually reactive. Something's been a trigger or a catalyst and then it becomes time to do some sort of reflection and examination.
That's exactly right, Mike.
Yeah.
Very reactionary.
And it's not unique to Tiverton, of course, so we're not, you know, trying to call that out in any way. So it's, it does go to the point though of, you know, thinking about as each iteration, as we get into the process again and it becomes an iterative cycle, what, you know, what considerations can be made to changing the way things have always been done? The information we get, you know, is it sufficient? Is it detailed enough? Is it too much information on the wrong topic? So part of what we're trying to help uncover is just that as well. It's, it's potential inefficiency in any process because we're doing it just because that's all we know. The people that we hear before, as you mentioned, in elected capacities, they learn from either seeing it by being in attendance at meetings or they learn from the people that are around them. But if there, if there isn't any incentive to move beyond that, then you can get into the cycle if it's the same thing, different, you know, just change the date and we're in a different year. Especially with the challenges that come forth seemingly out of the blue. But, you know, we're talking about trying to forecast and expect some of these things. So helping to get some sort of documentation in place to say, what does forecasting mean to the town of Tiverton, to the school department? What factors can be considered? And Jim was alluding to some of the analysis information that's available to say, there's really nothing we can do about 55%, and I'm just making an arbitrary number up. 55% of the budget is a fixed cost or again, a mandated cost. So some of it is actually also potentially just educational across the board, right? Does everyone understand that? Is that routinely discussed or highlighted in discussions that you have back and forth? Are you going between the school and the town? There's opportunities to do things differently than they have been done in the past, to communicate in ways that get a message across that maybe everyone's assuming everyone knows or people just don't know enough to ask the question, so it never gets addressed. So that's part of what we're trying to uncover in these questions and interviews that we're having. And I will of course allow for any questions based on anything I just said. But I think what I wanted to transition us to is now the communications between the school committee and the town. And how that process is currently working, right, I suppose we could say, right now, where do we stand? But routinely, what is that process once you've had your discussions on budget? But as I said, if there was any questions for us, please feel free to go through those.
I don't have a question, but I would like to just comment on one component of what you brought up because I think everything you say is true, I'm not disputing any of it. But I think the, in a corporate setting, you will have groups who will, you know, there will be a budget that, let's say a division is allowed to get. And, you know, there are X number of initiatives that need to be prioritized. And of course, you will have everyone advocating for what their priority is. And that's no different in a town setting. The difference in a corporate setting, however, is there is a structure, a hierarchy. And there is the expectation of collaboration amongst all, right? As employees, that is the expectation of us all. You know, you can certainly make your case, but you are expected to work with everyone and understand the other side and be prepared to negotiate and/or compromise. The struggle we have in government is that sometimes those compromises are harder to get to. And I think, you know, we'll speak to the communication component of it. But it's, you know, you have a similar exercise of trying to prioritize the use of funds. And in that case, you have, instead of a hierarchy, you have branches of government. And it's a little more difficult to come to that same place.
Understand, I absolutely agree, especially if you're a publicly traded company. The corporate governance oversight is just, it's there. But one of the points that you made that I thought was interesting is prioritizing initiatives. And how is that done? That's usually through your five-year strategic planning coupled with an enterprise risk assessment to identify those risks that are most important in those strategies that are going to mitigate those risks. And if there's agreement and collaboration on that, in theory, everything should fall behind.
Agreed.
Mike, did you want to transition over to?
Yeah, I thought it would be a good point in the conversation to again, talk a little bit more about the communications with the town, where you currently stand right now on budget from your side, from the town side, you know, and how that compares to what your expectation is. So we need to have an understanding from you of where the process is and where, if it's not where it should be, you know, what's the ideal state that should have happened? And if there's any reasons we know of why.
So in previous years, we've already have presented to the town council. I think last year was the first year that they actually were controlling the full budget versus the budget committee. We haven't had that opportunity this year because we can't get our schedules lined up. So we haven't had that, what we've had in the past. You would think with everything that's going on this year, we have that opportunity already. We haven't been able to.
I just ask one point on that, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
Isn't there anything that's mandated that you must have, that was conversations by certain date?
Well, we have to get it turned in to them, but not a sit-down presentation.
Thank you.
Which we haven't had that yet. Should that be something that's agreed upon? Or I said maybe in the charter, it's been said, probably doesn't need to be put in writing. It's got to be very helpful to have someone that's asking you for something in front of you so you can ask questions, right? I mean, that's just how the world, when my kids need things, I would expect they would ask me and their mother and we make a decision. So this part of the exercise we're moving into for me is a hot button, I'll be honest. We haven't had that opportunity and I'm not sure how we fix it because I think right now it's out of our control. So we forecast, we give a budget, but we don't create revenues or anything. So we just have to say, let us know when you need us, right? Instead of saying, we need to meet, we have to get together, we need to ask questions, we need to figure this out. That's not happening right now. And we're, we're trying to get together to do this, but when you have a town like this, we just need to have a process. That part of the process isn't written in stone, right? Which probably needs to be.
Yeah, I don't disagree that, I think having a process takes the politics out of it, takes the personalities out of it, takes the competing, a little bit of the competing narratives out of it. I do want to just say that there actually is, Rhode Island state law does require that we meet no later than December 31st. We do have a meeting, they probably last 20 minutes. You can view it if you'd like, it's very short. It's, hey, we have a challenge this year and that's about what's discussed. There is another state law that requires that we actually have a pre-budget consultation by March 19th. That also does not happen. So, or it does not happen in the way that the law has tried to at least address some of the issues that you're speaking of, that, you know, it's trying to force, to Mike's point, a little bit of a process in place. I don't think the two meetings that state law talks about are good enough. I think there needs to be, you know, they need to be probably earlier and more frequent. But there are at least a couple of laws that do, that do, and I'm happy to leave them with you, but there are a couple of laws to speak to it. To Mike's point, you want to, you ask about, you know, current conversation, there hasn't been.
From a standpoint of catalyst for making these things happen, help us understand what the impediments are. And I'll quantify or qualify that a little bit by saying, is this type of a setting, you know, required and open? Calling it the wrong thing, forgive me.
Open meeting.
Open meeting.
Yes.
So you have that expectation first off that would drive the scheduling of a meeting. It's to get the folks with the availability on and off. You know, you have your own meetings, they have their own meetings. So you're trying to coordinate separate meetings that need to happen, where you need to have a quorum on both sides. It needs to be disclosed 48 hours in advance, okay? So that sounds like part of a challenge, but that would be a known, right? Built into the process, I guess, regardless.
I think if you, like to your point, if you had set dates, you're now working around those way in advance. So you know when those are going to happen, you know not to schedule anything else that night. You know that, you know, you're going to be expected, at least a majority of your body is going to be expected to be at those meetings. So to have some of that stuff in advance, I think, Mike, would be helpful to those challenges.
And then to follow up on that, so who, who would be responsible for making it happen? Is the chairperson of the school committee, is it the, and again, if I use the wrong terminology, forgive me, you know, from town council, the town administrator, you know, is it a matter of two individuals? Or is it a broader type of communication that needs to have, take place to get these meetings scheduled and to happen? Just help us understand, thank you.
Sure, I'll speak to how I think it should happen. I firmly believe that early in the process, that there should be email communications happening between the town administrator, school superintendent, chair of the school committee and the president of the town council. All in a thread, let's make a plan and set meeting dates, it's really that simple. You know, and then the respective chairs can inform their bodies of what the proposed dates are. If anyone has any objections to specific dates and times, they can relay those then. And those four individuals can work it out again via email so that there is a trail and no misunderstanding on when, what's been agreed to. That's, to me, that's how it should happen.
Do you want to know how it does happen?
That was the next question.
Is that important to know?
Yeah. Currently, the chair of the, for the most part, the chair of the school committee and the president of the council simply text back and forth or call back and forth.
Okay, so it's more of just a direct attempted coordination to get all of those other things to happen.
Very informally.
Very informally, okay.
Well, no doubt, there isn't any documentation of those communications.
None.
I mean, if it's in an email, there might be.
I guess it's not mandated to have documentation of those communications.
I think as representatives of public bodies, they should. That's the best practice.
Being auditors, contemporaneous documentation is very important.
Absolutely.
Agreed. That's why we sort of, how we should it, but how is it?
What's the lead time on those calls and texts before scheduling a meeting?
You'd have to speak to them.
Yeah.
Definitely not months.
Definitely not months.
So with the, with the processes that currently is laid out then, um, you know, I think the. Disinterested third party would say that that's not ideal. Is there an action plan in place to get some sort of communication? Stimulated in moving because you have a June thirtieth deadline for everything, so I'm just, again, just help us understand the process.
The chair has sent an email and the superintendent has sent an email that we were all copied on. To request a meeting.
Uh, when, when was that? What's the date for that request? Do we know?
That latest request was late last week.
Do we know that the requested date, though?
Oh, well, w- we initially suggested, um, tomorrow night, the ninth. But certainly, as, as we haven't heard back, I don't think that's gonna happen. But really, anytime between now and, uh, the financial town hearing, which is the next official step in this process. It, it needs to happen.
Just as a follow-up to that, when is that scheduled to happen? And I, I'm sorry, I know these are things that are.
I don't have my schedule.
What was the question again? I'm sorry.
A financial town hearing, they adopted May thirteenth. Does it have to be within two weeks of that? They haven't scheduled it? Okay, so it, it's gonna happen between May thirteenth and June thirtieth, which is the June thirtieth is the deadline of set by charter, which. They have to adopt a budget. So the hearing has to happen in between those two dates? And the charter does specify the, the date ranges? Yeah, I just don't happen to have it.
We obviously will also want to be mindful of your time. I know we had set this meeting to be an hour and we're fast approaching that time. I'll ask if my colleagues have any additional questions, and if not. Uh, or if they do after that, that if you have any final questions for us, then we can move to that phase. Thank you.
I guess my, um, again, thank you for your time tonight, first off, and second, if. You could describe perhaps, um, the one thing if you could see it improved in the process, what would that be? Maybe each of you could have a chance at answering that.
I'd love to start. So communication, one A, one B, one C. We have to have. Determined, planned meetings and, and. You know, deadlines that we need to have communication over. I think we've painted a picture for you that a lot of things are done sort of off the cuff, or. Eh, you just do that and we'll hear back when it happens. That can't be. Because when you have something as important as what we have, you need to be. Lockstep, right? It should be lockstep, right? I think the school committee and the town council should be moving like this. We're sort of moving like this. So I think in the grand scheme of things, if anyone in the town knows anything about how this budget process works. I think they would all agree it's broken. Everyone would agree it's broken. So I think I'm seeing nodding heads my own peers. We can't make them walk lockstep with us, but I think we all agree we want to walk lockstep together. And in the future, we have to make this a better situation. It's gotta be a flow. There needs to be a plan, like we said, maybe it's every three months, maybe it's whatever it may be. There are these dates and we need to agree to them, whether it's gonna be a charter change, or it's an agreement between the bodies. I, I would say in the past, the budget committee would have needed to be involved, and I'm not saying they shouldn't. They also could be, so it could be the three bodies. But at least the school committee and the town council need to be side by side in this process, have to be. Without it, 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 it can't function. It's like a husband and wife trying to run a household and they're on two different. Wavelengths, right? They gotta be together to run it right. So, and, and thank you, appreciate it.
Agree with everything Mike just said, first and foremost. Finding a way to have more effective lines of communication. It, it's gotta be priority number one. I, you know, I, I also, I, in, I, Mike brought this up earlier as well about the, or was it Deb? I'm not sure. The charter change commission, I think they call it. You know, one of the problems that Tiverton's been struggling with the last several years is really lack of engagement. And the charter commission was due to be reconstituted, I believe, a year or two ago. And I, it, well, it must have been the twenty twenty-two election, I'm just thinking about this now. Um, and, and nobody ran. To, to take a seat on the charter commission, to review the charter for, uh, recommended improvements. Um, I believe that the town council advertised for volunteers to simply step forward, wouldn't even have to be elected. And, and again, I, i- if they got one or two people, that was it, and that wasn't nearly enough to put together a commission. So my, my understanding is that their intention was to put it on the ballot this coming year as well to, let's try to run the election again, but. The charter hasn't been fully reviewed now in a number of years.
I'm sorry, Diane, twenty sixteen was the last one.
Okay.
And like twenty-five people ran for that.
Yeah, um, it, it, it became a very political endeavor, unfortunately. And, and as a result, um, much of what came from the committee that was seated was, uh, rejected. So we, we really haven't had an honest to goodness review and, and thoughtful. Thoughtful discussion about our charter. I can tell you with the, uh, role of the school committee and, and budgeting within the charter. It's, it's very limited, um, you know. It, it's our role, e- according to section eleven oh one, to prepare and submit its budget, our budget. Uh, inclusive of any expenditures and state educational and general revenues to the town administrator. Okay, that's, that's per charter and we do do that, we comply. Um, and then finally, um, the school committee shall prepare and submit it. Along with any, to the town administrator honor before March nineteenth, that's right in the charter, and, and we do comply. And there's also, of course, state law, which specifies our duties with regard to the budget as well. But a- again, the, the charter piece is very minimal. Where it concerns, um, the expectations of the school committee or the expectations of the town, quite frankly. It just lays out the, the dates and the process, but there isn't any kind of expectation for collaboration, and I think maybe that needs to be. Added to the charter. Well, you know, I'm starting with forecasting. So I won't belabor that point. Um, I think there, I would love to see an annual pre-budget meeting. Before we all sort of get into our separate budgets, sort of, you know, where's, what's the revenue expectations? You know, those, those types of things, what, what unique challenges are in this year? Did we? Did we lose motor, you know, the motor vehicle, remember, just what are the unique things going into this year, sort of this pre-budget meeting? I would love to see, um, sort of some best practice for dates and policies and procedures. Because I think that it, the, that will take out the politics. Really, because here's some best practices that we've put together, here's some dates that we think you need to be focusing on. Um, and finally, and I, I, I don't know if it, um, is possible, but rather than have us have a finance subcommittee. And, and you have a, a treasurer and, and other individuals over there, I'd love to see, I know other cities and towns have done it, a joint finance subcommittee. Treasurer would be a member, certainly, uh, the superintendent, the town administrator, but then we would appoint members, they would appoint members, perhaps you. Uh, select a several members from the public, but somebody that's focused sort of on everything and not just. You know, the separate.
Solely on finance.
Yeah, solely on finance, just finance, yeah. Um, and I know there are other cities and towns that, um, you know, do, do do that. They're a little bit bigger than us, so that's probably necessary. So those would be my ass, which.
Part of that too, Ms. Farnworth came up with, with respect to the charter review, bringing that in almost in the same vein from a best practices perspective, so it's all aligned.
Really, that concludes the question period that we had. Again, if there were any questions or follow-up or final parting thoughts. For us as we continue through, we're, we're going to continue to meet with some folks. Uh, at the school finance department over the, the next twenty-four hours, we'll be speaking with the town. State agencies as well, so it's, again, we're trying to get a, a soup to nuts, a start to finish understanding of the process, where the. Touchpoints are, who's involved, where the challenges are, and come back with. Observations, you know, that everyone can, can look at and hopefully embrace.
How long do you think this process will take?
We'll get through tomorrow in interviews. There are some document requests that have gone out today. We might have some more document requests that go out based on our conversations. But within probably next two weeks, we feel.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's just a matter of going through everything that's been provided to us, you know, we have to kind of. Lay this out now with an understanding of the flow, so when you talk about a process from, from end, end to end. And see if, in addition to any document requests, if there are any gaps that, you know, collectively, we didn't ask something, we need to go back and find out if the, you know. Could we get a further explanation on something? So that's, that's an element as well, and then reviewing the documentation, so. I think that's a realistic timeline from our standpoint, to be able to come back and say, here's what we have seen and what we. Have as additional comments, so we've expressed to everyone that we've spoken to that, um, the. Product that we're trying to produce isn't going to be a surprise, so we do have to go back as well to individuals and say, now that we've gone through and had these discussions. We need to allow the opportunity for folks to review what we've compiled, because it's, you know, it's a compilation of statements that they've made or documents they've provided, so. Back to the superintendent and the finance folks, back to you folks to make sure we haven't misrepresented anything, it would be the same with the town. So there is a little bit of that element as well, that, that kind of gets baked into the timeline, that not everyone else understands, but that's. That just ensures that you don't get something and go, what, what's this? We didn't say or agree or, or whatever, so there is, you know, that, this, that part of the. The tail end of any project that we just want to make sure we get through, so it's as concise as it can be and as on-spot as it can be.
Were you, were you satisfied with the level of cooperation you received from the administrators today?
Yes. Everybody was forthcoming, everyone was able, was amenable to providing incremental documentations based on our conversation, yes.
Do you feel that they provided you with useful information?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So anything, I guess, additional you need from us? Can they coordinate through you, Ben? If, if, if you needed anything from us, anything we touched on that you wanted copies of or anything, they can work through you?
Maybe just any questions that the committee might have for us?
Yeah, my, my only question is, and it's gonna be my final one, I don't know if you've done this before with an entire committee versus one-on-one. Find it helpful to have? All of us together instead of one-on-one?
Y- yes, we, we do have experience. When you go into audit committees, it's always a forum of folks, and then you go in executive session, it's always a forum of a smaller group of folks. Yes, we do. It's, it's, it is very helpful. Sometimes it's good one-on-one, so, but we do find when folks are able to talk with one another. It's good.
Thank you.
You free time?
Take a motion to adjourn?
I'll sec, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Thank you.